It's already quiet. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 10th, 2025 Troy City Council meeting. This evening, we're honored to have Pastor Matt Schuler from Faith Lutheran Church to provide our invocation. So please rise if you are able for that invocation and then remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
It got quiet, Mayor, but it was full of life the moment before you hit the gavel. Let's pray. Lord God heavenly Father, I just want to give you thanks for all those who are serving faithfully in this city of Troy, those who were elected, those who were appointed, those who are employed to give so much of their lives, those who are faithfully finished with their work, we give you thanks for, especially tonight, Ms. Ellen. And we just pray continued blessings on our leaders, on our city, and on all who call Troy home and work in our wonderful city. All this we pray through the Holy Spirit in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Matt. I will call the November 10th, 2025 Troy City Council meeting to order and ask for the roll call for Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Here.
Councilmember Chanda?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gunn?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hodrick?
Here.
All present this evening. There are no certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have no carryover items and no public hearings. So we'll move on to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We have four people signed up this evening for items on the agenda from Troy residents. And our city council rules of procedure allow for three minutes each. The timer will be going here. When the light turns yellow, that means you have one minute left. When it turns red, that means your three minutes are up. We will begin with Carrie Brennan.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Carrie Brennan, and I am the co-chair of Troy Youth Assistance. I am also an assistant principal at Troy High School, but I am here tonight in my personal capacity as a Troy resident and concerned citizen and do not speak on behalf of the Troy School District. I am here to discuss item J4G, the funding for TYA. TYA was founded in 1958 as a collaboration between the city of Troy, the Troy School District, and the Oakland County Courts. For nearly 70 years, this partnership has provided interventions and supports to struggling K-12 students who live in Troy or attend the Troy School District. Tonight, we are coming to you with a request for additional support to combat food insecurity. In short, food and housing insecurity attack a student's potential from multiple angles. They make it harder to be present due to absenteeism, harder to be engaged due to cognitive and health issues, and harder to be academically successful due to learning disruptions. This accumulation of disadvantages creates a direct and formidable barrier to successfully completing high school. Food security and housing go hand in hand. Like many throughout the country, numerous Troy families live paycheck to paycheck and do not have the wherewithal to survive the loss of a vital resource such as food assistance. TSD high schools are already experiencing higher rates of chronic absenteeism, which is missing 10% or more of school days than before the pandemic. In 2018, 2019, Troy High and Athens both had chronic absenteeism rates of less than 5% in the last full academic year before the pandemic. In 2425, THS's chronic absenteeism was at 13% and Athens was at 20%. The further destabilization of food and housing securities of at-risk students caused an increase in chronic absenteeism. In addition, both are considered adverse childhood experiences or, more simply, traumatic events for our students. Research shows that chronic absenteeism is a strong predictor of poor educational and life outcomes, including high school graduation. Therefore, addressing food insecurity now will almost certainly prevent problems such as juvenile delinquency in the future. As recently as 2010, 2011, the city funded TYA at $35,000. Adjusted for inflation, that would be a little over $52,000 today. We are only asking for a $10,000 increase to $25,000 so that we can meet this emergent crisis. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Carrie. Next up is Stephanie Zendler.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Zendler, and I'm a Troy resident. I'm also an elected board trustee for the Troy School District, and I am the district's representative and board member of TYA. However, I am here tonight not in my capacity as Troy School District board member, but as a citizen of Troy and a formerly food insecure child, to discuss item J4G on tonight's consent agenda. I respectfully ask that the council increase funding from $15,000 to $25,000 for '25, '26 so that TYA can better meet the needs of the current food insecurity crisis caused by increased food insecurity where the federal government is shut down. Prior to being elected to the school board, I was the principal at Morris Elementary School for 12 years. If you're familiar with the school, please know that Morris is what is called a Title I school, which means that the concentration of economically disadvantaged students is so great that it is eligible for special federal funding. It is the only school in TSD with the Title I designation. As principal of Morris, I witnessed firsthand how TYA serves as a vital resource for connecting families struggling with material needs. Troy is an affluent community, but not all families in Troy are affluent. In particular, many young families with children want the best education possible for their children, and so they sacrifice to find an apartment or home in the city that stretches them financially. Because they are what HUD calls "housing overburdened," they need assistance for other basic expenses such as food. Nutritional benefits are the most important support that many families receive as they cannot make ends meet without them. In the absence of them, they become food insecure, and food insecure people can quickly become housing insecure people. These consequences are devastating, absolutely devastating for children, and the adverse childhood trauma of going to sleep hungry or losing one's home will last a lifetime. Addressing food insecurity has typically not been TYA's primary focus, but in the upcoming year, it will need to be. We are rallying volunteers and dedicating our staff to coordinate those volunteers to help with the district food bank. This is a vital service to the city and its residents. A one-time increase of $10,000 will ensure that we have the resources to sustain these additional activities until the food insecurity crisis ends. We are so grateful to the city for maintaining our funding at $15,000. However, given the scale and size of the current crisis, we need more resources to help solve this problem locally for our youngest residents. Please amend item J4G from $15,000 to $25,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next up is Walter Cook.
My name is Walter Cook, and I'm a resident of Troy. I come to you as a volunteer treasurer of Troy Youth Assistance to make an urgent plea for help. On the consent agenda for tonight is item J4G, which would maintain TYA's annual funding at $15,000. However, we need an additional $10,000, one-time additional support from the city so that we can dedicate staff and other resources to manage volunteers that are supporting the Troy School District's food bank to help Troy families through the present food insecurity crisis. So rather than $15,000, we need $25,000 to assist TSD's food bank with logistics, volunteer coordination, and other district support. These services to the city that TYA historically has not provided will greatly contribute to the safety and welfare of city residents. Councilmember Chamberlain, we both work in the nonprofit sector. We both know that philanthropic organizations focus on where concentration of poverty is greatest, which is not Troy, but some of our children still face food insecurity. Councilmember Hamilton, we are both public finance nerds. We share a respect for budgets and fiscal responsibility. I respect that this request was not included in the budget development cycle, but respectfully, the city has a general fund balance of approximately $44 million. Please support this one-time increased allocation of $10,000. Finally, Councilmember Hodrick, this will be one of your final acts on city council. Please let your legacy be in this moment of crisis, you led by your compassion and as a tireless champion for the most vulnerable members of our society. These are not just our neighbors' children, they are our children, and we have a collective responsibility to ensure that they are fed. The dysfunction by the federal government means that many of them might go to bed hungry this month. The state and county cannot help, but our local government can. Please, on behalf of Troy's most vulnerable families, I'm begging you to remove item J4G from the consent agenda in order to amend it to provide an additional $10,000 from $15,000 to $25,000. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Walter. Next up is Shahid Ahmed.
My name is Shahid, and I am a resident of Troy. I was here a couple of months back. Today, I am going to be talking about the item I-7, which is Bolen Park Cricket Field. And I have a very easy question. I mean, although this could wait, but I am so excited. We were hoping that it will be available to us last summer, but I understand there were some challenges. My question for Cricket Field is, what will be the process to reserve it for summer 2026? As I have spent almost three decades in Michigan, you know, being an administrator and dealing with cities, I know they have their own processes. And, you know, as Cricket administrator, I like to utilize this field, so I'm just excited and anxious to know the process. That is my question, and I have another item to speak, so I can come back. If anybody can comment on this request, that's fine. I have a minute or so.
Thank you. Our rules don't allow for us to have the back and forth right now, but we have an opportunity to address it at the conclusion of everyone speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sarwad Siddiqui.
Yeah, same criteria. This is on agenda and some items on off agenda. Again, I'm repeating the same questions. What will be the criteria about the Cricket Field? How are we going to reserve it? How much is going to be rent per day? And like this kind of thing? And how many leagues has to be drawn, you know, for that one? You know, all these, we need to work on that one very much in detail, so we don't want to see any confusion, you know, start of the next year, then we want to reserve those fields. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Now's an opportunity for council or administration to reply. City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just wanted to address the agreements that are on the agenda, funding out of the police department's budget. And it's important that council realizes that the only way, you can't just give money, they have to actually be performing services that would otherwise be performed by city of Troy employees. So the agreements that are in there, we have funded these organizations for many, many years because they are performing services that would otherwise need to be performed by the city of Troy. So I just want you to keep that in mind, that that is a requirement, and also, these contracts already have been signed with the amounts inserted in them.
Okay. We'll think about that. For the moment, it's not on our agenda yet. I did have another question for City Manager Nastasi regarding the request for information regarding the Cricket Field. I'm assuming you don't have those answers prepared right at the moment?
No, but our recreation director, Brian Goo, might be able to answer that because I know we have new software and whatnot, so I'll put him in the hot seat.
He stood up, so it's on him.
So currently, we're working on the plan for reserving the Cricket Field. We have an idea. It is going to be a random type process because there will be so much demand. So we're working on the process right now. We don't have an opening date, an opening actual date for the Cricket Field yet, so we don't want to start reserving when we don't know if it's going to be available. So as soon as we get a date, a solid date, we'll be able to put that out, and you'll most likely reserve on our registration system. And if there's multiple people requesting multiple dates, it'll be a random system based on who's gotten other reservations. Any other questions?
Any questions, follow-up questions? Councilmember Brooks?
I do have a question. I know it's a little bit early and we don't have the details, but say, for example, there is some confusion. How would it be enforced potentially? Maybe two people kind of show up or somebody shows up and there's some dispute?
Well, right now, it would be just like if someone had a baseball diamond reserved. You know, they would have their permit, they would go there, and they could, if there was an argument over it, they would contact the police. Police would go and handle the situation. It's just like running a pavilion, you know? Two people could show up, and the person, if one won't leave, then the police department's called to handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So it's, go ahead, Councilmember Chamberlain.
Oh, I was just on a follow-up of, I realized we're launching the new software for recreation. Is that, I forgot the actual date of that. Is that coming up? I'm wondering how this?
It's tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow? Okay. How this interplays with all of these new kind of procedures?
Just, so my assumption is that these specifics will be well-publicized, they'll be on our website, it'll be clear for the user, for the folks, and we'll make sure, we'll make sure that they, I guess I'm talking to them. We'll make sure you know that when that information is readily available, and, you know, we have good contacts with all of you because you've worked so consistently to ensure the Cricket Field's been in process, we'll make sure that that information is pushed out to you, I guess is what I'm committing to, because I know that makes sense for you.
Yep, we'll have it in all our advertising, so.
All right, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other reply or comments at this point? I can't have you come back, sir. Sorry, it doesn't work like that. You can talk to Brian if you like, specifically.
Very big bureau criteria on that stuff.
Sir, we can't do this like this. I apologize. You can stick around afterwards and we can talk, or you can talk to someone from city staff. Okay, thank you. We have no postponed items this evening, so we move on to regular business. I have no mayoral appointments this evening. There is a city council appointment, I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Gunn.
No, I don't have any city.
You do have an appointment, but.
No, we took care of that.
You nominated that you have to appoint. Do you have a control?
No, I don't think so.
It's in the agenda, so.
You know why? Because I thought he was taking over.
Right. It's his last act as mayor pro tem. I'll give you a pass, but.
I'll do.
Anybody can move it on council. Somebody has it handy, you can.
I'll move it, Mayor.
Councilmember Chamberlain.
I'll move it. I'd be happy to move, what is this? This is I-1? Are we at, no, two.
I-1B.
I-1B, to move Tina Katron to the Animal Control Board for the term expiring September 30th, 2028. Support.
Moved by Councilmember Chamberlain, supported by Councilmember Hodrick, that we approve the appointment of Tina Katron to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the term expiring September 30th, 2028. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodrick?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes city council appointments. I-2 is board and committee nominations. I have no mayoral nominations this evening, and I don't believe there are any city council nominations this evening. So move on to I-3. There's no request for a closed session. So that takes us to I-4, which is election and oath of office for Mayor Pro Tem, and that'll be introduced by City Clerk Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Council rules have a rotation in place for Mayor Pro Tem, the Mayor Pro Tem position. The next council member in line for Mayor Pro Tem is Councilmember Chanda. So we left the space blank just in case there was a different decision, because council can always waive their rules and choose someone else, but next in the rotation would be Councilmember Chanda.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, I'll move, resolve that Troy City Council hereby elects Harak Chanda to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the city council of the city of Troy for a term scheduled to expire at the first city council meeting in, that's not right, November 2026 pursuant to City Charter Section 3.7. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, to approve I-4, the election and oath of office for Mayor Pro Tem, electing Harak Chanda. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Brooks?
Support.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Support.
Councilmember Chanda?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Gunn?
Support.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. We're all, we're spurred and, yeah, Harak. You all supported? Yes, or?
I do sound always swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Mayor Pro Tem in and for the city of Troy, County Oakland, State of Michigan, according to my abilities to help.
We'll take a two-minute recess so they can switch seats. All right. All right, we're back on the record. Next up is I five, 2026 City Council Meeting Schedule Advanced. That will be introduced by City Manager Frank Nastasi.
Thank you, Mayor. This item asks council to set the date for the 2026 Advance. As you know, the Advance is our annual strategic planning session where council and staff discuss priorities in a focused setting. This helps us prepare a balanced budget that aligns with your expectations and keeps us on track for the charter deadlines. In prior years, Advance was usually held in November or December, but last January on 2024, the Advance was canceled in favor of our Capitol Conference, which was held on January 11th. That timing worked well and allowed council and staff to have Capitol discussions closer to the start of the budget process. Since this year's election was only a week ago and the outcome of the bond proposal is still fresh, it makes sense to continue that schedule again this year and hold it in January. So the proposed date is Saturday, January 17th, and this also helps with staff, gives us needed time to prepare, and I'm happy to answer any questions you should have.
Thank you, Frank. Any questions? Someone want to move the resolution? Councilmember Chamberlain.
I'll move I five, 2026 City Council Meeting Schedule Advanced. Be resolved that Troy City Council shall hold a special meeting on January 17th, 2026 at 9:00 a.m. at Troy Community Center or as otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Procedure.
Support.
As printed in the agenda packet.
Moved by Councilmember Chamberlain, supported by Councilmember Gunn that we approve I five, 2026 City Council Meeting Schedule Advanced as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Chamberlain.
Just want to say quickly, I read the entire thing because I just want to emphasize to the public that this is a chance where we're going to be revisiting the bond. We're going to be deep diving as a new council on next steps and how do we engage the public in that process. So the whole public is invited to this, and we encourage you to take part or follow up, and we want to share what we learn from it, and we want to be hearing from you between now and that meeting. Thanks.
Any other discussion? All right. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is I six, 2026 City of Troy Advanced Meeting Facilitation Consulting Services, also introduced by City Manager Nastasi.
Thank you. As a follow-up to the previous item, this request is for council to approve facilitation services for the 2026 Advance. Advance meetings are longer sessions where we work through complex topics. A third-party facilitator helps keep the discussion organized and ensures all areas of discussion are covered. Council has used Vitrano Consulting for several years, including 2022 and 2023 advances and our 2025 Capitol Conference. Staff and council have been satisfied with the work. The recommendation is to waive the bid process and award the contract to Vitrano Consulting for facilitation of the 2026 Advance pursuant to the agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Frank. Any questions? Whose phone is that? That's my question. All right. Someone like to move I six? Mayor Pro Tem Chanda?
I move I six, 2026 City of Troy Advanced Meeting Facilitation Consulting Services as printed on the agenda packet.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Chanda, supported by Councilmember Gunn that we approve I six, 2026 City of Troy Advanced Meeting Facilitation Consulting Services as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Hoderick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the important steps in our budget process that basically begins with the fiscal year, July 1. City staff has been working behind the scenes, and then this, the advance and the work that the council does is a very critical piece to help us represent the residents. Troy's form of government is council-manager form of government. I've taken over time to refer to it as the high school group project from you-know-where. It is a group project that we do. We bring seven members representing the residents together with the city administration and city staff to try to combine the knowledge that we each bring, the information, the operational detail, the political environment, what we're hearing from our residents. It's a really critical piece of the process of the strategic planning, and I think it can often escape the public that we even go through these kinds of processes and this kind of thinking, this kind of deep diving to collaborate on behalf of delivering services to the community to the best of our ability, to enable staff to deliver those services. The budget represents the priorities, and we really try to work very hard at that. It's a group project that gets hand down over the years. So when this next council has takes on the project, it will include the input from policies that were set even a dozen years ago, 15 years ago, that still play into the priorities and how the city runs. It's complicated. It's important, it's a wonderful challenge for council and city administration to work on, especially if the residents understand it. You can give input to the council members in advance of the events so they can take that in there. I just, I wanted to elevate, you know, folks have said, what's next after the spend proposal vote? This is what's next. The next budget development process is what's next, and this is a very key piece of that process. So I'll be voting to support a consultant coming in because a neutral party coming in with such facilitation skills is really critical to trying to deliver this important work product to our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoderick. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Pro Tem Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is I seven, bid waiver and capital expense approval, Bullen Park Cricket Field Official Stand and Maintenance Shed, and that will be introduced by Kurt Boetman, our DPW Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Well, I'm super excited that there's still enthusiasm in the community based on the public comments. So I've been before you in the past and expressed the challenges that we've had with this project. It goes to show you that there are good contractors, and then there are contractors that we probably will not bring to you for recommendation in the near future. But with that, with those challenges also brought some maybe good opportunities. As I stated in the memo, we had an opportunity to sod the entire field because of the delay. We've had an opportunity to irrigate the entire field because of the delay, and what I'm bringing forward to you tonight is another opportunity. As you know, this project was funded with the help of Representative McDonald, who's here tonight. So we received a $900,000 grant to construct this field. With these challenges brought opportunities to penalize the contractor monetarily. There were some things that they completed unsuccessfully for a couple of times, so for that reason, the city has elected to not pay them for the utility shed that was in the original proposal, and we're going to take that responsibility on ourselves and construct that utility shed. With that, again, the penalties because of the delay in the project and some other things we are able to get credits for. There's also an opportunity to bring some of the amenities that originally got cut in the project because of the cost. One of those was the official stand. So during the design process, working with Vinod and his team, it was important to have an official stand, even a tower for a camera. We are being prepared to have a fully functional field by next spring. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Gunn.
So my understanding, this is just a waiver, right? The capital expense cost is already built into the project?
So we have budgeted the full amount of the capital grant, the grant. What I'm requesting tonight is, one, to waive the bid process and purchase the official stand, and two, is to expend those capital funds to actually construct the utility ourselves with in-house staff.
But we save money by not paying the contractor, right?
Correct. We have credited, yes. A lot of these savings that you're seeing that is able to make these purchases are penalties and credits that we receive from the contractor.
Great, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem Chanda, your question?
Yeah, I think it's a similar question, so this is refundable from the state, right? That's within that $900,000 that we received from the state.
That is correct. These are reimbursable expenses through the grant, yes.
Thank you. And then the other question is, is portable, so where is it going to be stored in nighttime or wintertime? Is it?
Yep. Well, during the wintertime, we'll probably bring it back to the DPW yard and store it in one of our storage buildings there. During the season, it can be stored right outside. It is covered. It does have its own cover. It has its own wind screens on the side, so it can be stored outside during the season.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to make a comment. I mean, that field is literally in my backyard, so I go there almost every day just to walk, and it is coming up nice. There we had some setbacks, as you described, but I think we'll have a pretty good opening next season, so thank you. Thank you for all the work.
Thank you. Any other questions? Someone want to move the resolution? Mayor Pro Tem Chanda? Sorry.
Okay. I move I seven, bid waiver and capital expenses approval for Bullen Park Cricket Field Official Stand and Maintenance Shed as printed on the agenda packet.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Chanda, supported by Councilmember Gunn that we approve I seven, bid waiver and capital expense approval, Bullen Park Cricket Field Official Stand and Maintenance Shed as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chanda?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes regular business this evening. Next up is the consent agenda. Anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilmember Hamilton.
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet.
I didn't get to speak up before you moved.
Oh, sorry. Okay, that's okay.
I would like to pull J four G for further discussion.
Yeah, sure. Support.
I would like to move pulling J four G for further discussion. Is that I have?
Do we move? We don't have to move.
We can just restate the J one with removing J four G.
Yeah. Councilmember Hamilton?
Yep, I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet except for J four G.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Hoderick that we approve all items on the consent agenda except for J four G, which will be held for further discussion after the vote. Any discussion on the items not including J four G? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Motion carries. If you're here for an item on the consent agenda except for J four G, all of them have been approved. So we'll bring up now J four G. Councilmember Hoderick, did you want to start with comments on that? You pulled it.
Yeah, I can start. First, I want to start by saying typically I would be hesitant to just midstream change course in our contracts and what we're doing. We follow processes for very good reason, and I think you understand that. The dysfunction that we are experiencing at the federal level, I think, is good reason to take pause here and have this discussion. We do have a fund balance, and it is for recognizing when we need to step up in a circumstance. It might be something related to our public safety, equipment needs that there are, or a DPW need that wasn't properly anticipated and due to unforeseen circumstances wasn't properly anticipated. This organization, Troy Youth Assistance, and its focus on supporting members of our community, and I know full well the example that was brought forward from Morse, having seen, witnessed, heard the experiences of friends, fellow residents at Morse. I'm thinking that we could at least, there's an emergency need, but there's also, I think, a need for us to make sure we think through what we direct our city administration to do in these circumstances and to really recognize that this is a unique moment, and I'm not really sure how to proceed, how to propose we actually proceed. Maybe some advice from city administration or if anyone else on council has a more specific idea, but I do think this merits our discussion.
Councilmember Chamberlain.
I was just going to add, so this reminds me of the moment. I think the only difference is the funding stream, as our city attorney pointed out, but it reminds me during COVID, our nonprofits who run the Staged Nature Center, the Troy Historic Village, and we stepped up and we spoke out. I work in philanthropy. I've worked with nonprofits, so that was something on my heart, and we were able to find additional funding. It was temporary, it was during an emergency, and this is an emergency. I think the question is, is there a way to take an additional $10,000 from general fund, but it not be tied up in the way that, I hear you, City Attorney Bloom, that it has to replace functions the city would provide, but is there some other way, maybe from a different project budget, because funds come from different project budgets, that that would allow for that? So that's beyond my knowledge.
Unfortunately, no. I mean, municipal, there are constitutional restrictions on what you can do with city funds, and charitable giving is not one of those things that is permitted. However, you are able to contract if it is replacing services that the city would otherwise have to provide or be obligated to provide. And so that's why we've had, that's why with the Nature Society, they are taking care of that facility for us, and the Historic Society is taking care of the village for the city. It's city-owned property. So again, if you want us to, you know, if you want to pull this, we can certainly revisit it, but it's not something we just can't give for charitable purposes. We have constitutional restrictions on what we can do with municipal funds.
I think that's, Stephanie's gone, and so is Carrie, but Walter, you're still here. I think that, my understanding of the issue from earlier this afternoon and from what you've said tonight is that as, we just can't do what you've asked us to do, and, which obviously you can see on our faces is difficult for us, just kind of living this in the moment here, and I, based on that answer, I mean, I don't feel like we actually have much room left to go here, too far into this, other than to continue with what is presented to us and look for other sources. There's a county commissioner here as well, maybe Commissioner Erickson-Gault could help from the county. I won't put the pressure on Representative McDonald from the state because that takes too long. We know that. But I'm, you know, and I say this as somebody who struggled with the food insecurity as a kid myself, and so I know the need, and I know Morse's need, and I know that our community is as affluent as we appear to many, there's a huge need. So I, it sits with me in a really awful place, to be honest, Walter. But from a precedent setting standpoint, let alone a constitutional issue with our municipal funds, I don't know how we can take the action you've requested of us tonight. Ironically, I had lunch with somebody last week who's a business owner in the city who was looking for a place to give some funds to help children. I actually said Troy Youth Assistance, so I will work tomorrow to reconnect you to see if that can provide some support in a quicker fashion. Okay.
Councilmember Hoderick.
We can give voice to the organization from our perspectives. We can be reaching out to the Troy Chamber of Commerce because our business is looking for opportunities. We can help facilitate and guide people to your organization, which I do think there are many, many people looking for that opportunity. That, I know, is, I shouldn't speak for my colleagues, but I know the seven of us well enough, we would all work through our social media and whatnot to give voice to the need and help drive the contributions there.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Chanda?
That's something I was also going to suggest. I mean, I'm not sure exactly where that $15,000 is coming from. It sounds like that is legitimate, but we can't go anything beyond that. But if we, you know, we can do some fundraiser that the city can help facilitate. I mean, at least we can personally help with that, so that would be, that's something you guys can look into, and not as a city, but as private citizens and of course as elected officials, we can help facilitate that. I understand this food insecurity, you know, it may not be personally affecting many of us here, but I know that for sure that there are people in Troy that are suffering, and Morse is one example of that, so I'm very much committed to doing anything if you can do it, and my personal capacity to help out. I think that's all we can do at this point, it looks like, because it sounds like we don't have the legal authority to redistribute the fund even if we want to. So that's what I kind of want to leave it to.
Councilmember Gunn.
Just to kind of piggyback what everybody else said in terms of trying to help raise funds, certainly between everybody on council and some elected officials in the audience, we've had a lot of experience doing fundraisers, so maybe we could put some, put our ideas together and see what we can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Any additional comments on that discussion? All right, I'll move J four G Standard Purchasing Resolution Five, approval to expend budgeted funds to Troy Youth Assistance as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilmember Hamilton that we approve J four G Standard Purchasing Resolution Five, approval to expend budgeted funds to Troy Youth Assistance as printed in the agenda packet. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Now all items on the consent agenda have been approved. Next up are memorandums and future council agenda items. K one A is Community Development Block Grant, C D D G 2025 Funds, Public Hearing Announcement for November 17th, 2025. It's our next meeting. Now we move on to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We do have a good amount of people signed up as well. I see that two people have left already, but hopefully they spoke to you, Brian, since it's about catering at the community center. All right, good. So first up, same rules as before, the three minutes. I think all of you know these rules. So first up is Dale Marish.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. With the defeat of the bond proposal, I'd like to suggest revisiting my addition proposal. The rethinking libraries proposal for new construction was $39 million, and the bond proposal was for $75 million. I don't understand that. If you had a building built in 1957 and it was your home... If you had a building built in 1957 and it was your home, chances are good that you would repair it rather than replace it and put a, be your building on the same property. I know one area in Troy that did that, but they were one acre lots. For my proposed 36,000-foot addition, you could use the floor space for staff offices on the main floor and have six meeting rooms on the second floor, two of the highest need areas. Friends of the Troy Library could move to the new basement. It would, it could provide a significant additional floor space for $16 million. I used the, the numbers in the Rethinking Libraries to get that estimate. Existing library offices could be converted to provide incremental space for library contents or for quiet areas for library patrons. I envisioned a two-story building between the existing building and the civic center. Building an addition could be done without disrupting current library operations and offices could be moved when the new space became available. Best of all, it could be done for less than half the cost of other options. Part of it could be funded from the city's current budget, reducing the amount to be borrowed. There's $44 million in that fund. Or better yet, have a special fund for budget allocations until the total cost is in savings rather than paying millions of dollars in interest on a bond. Please do not ask the voters for a separate $75 million bond for the 90,000-foot square foot new construction, when either $15, $6, or $30 million, 86,000 square feet total would meet functional requirements. And I have a PowerPoint that I'll be sending to you that has some other ideas in it, but you could have corporations or foundations sponsoring part of the construction and you can contribute to a library building fund instead of borrowing money. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Sounds like you have a cold.
Yeah.
Rest up. Thank you.
I'm on the base now, not at the ERIC.
All right, next up is Ann Erickson Galt.
Good evening, council. Mayor mentioned, I'm Ann Erickson Galt, 21-year resident of Troy and former member of council, current county commissioner. I'm here, not for any of that, I'm here to celebrate Ellen Hoderick. Congrats at ditching your never-ending volunteer gig. You're probably grateful for the term limits in the charter because nobody was able to arm twist you this year in the running for yet another term. And the reason people do that is because you will be missed. It's been two years since we served together and I regularly miss you, wise council. One of the difficulties of representing a district is you often feel like you're on your own. And I never felt that way on council. I felt like we were part of a team. We were all collectively representing everybody in Troy. And that was such a great feeling. But now that you have more time on your hands, expect to hear from me more. Know that you've made a lasting positive impact on this city, both as your time on council and in the time that you served brilliantly as a activist before you were on council. Whether you were publicly campaigning to preserve the library, privately fighting against corruption in our city leadership, I should say former city leadership, to be very clear, steadfastly, conscientiously, making those hundreds, perhaps thousands, of difficult decisions to move our city forward and to preserve the qualities of Troy that we all hold dear. And as you head into your retirement from public life, you can rest assured that you leave the city in a much better position than it was before you joined council 12 years ago. You also leave behind an excellent body of council members to carry the weight. And you deserve some credit for that as well because I know for a fact that I would probably not have been elected without your support and guidance. And I suspect that other members of council can say the same. So Ellen, thank you for your unwavering dedication to the city that we all love and I hope that you're able to enjoy your time with your family.
Next up is Kelly Jones.
Good evening, council. I am just here, I'm going to bring this down a little bit. I am just here to thank councilmember Hoderick for your years of service, thankless service to this community and to the city. I first met councilwoman Hoderick when she worked with the amazing Cindy Stewart and I've watched her rise to lead this, lead this city with passion and commitment and pragmatism. Ellen, you will be missed. On behalf of the citizens of Troy, thank you so much for your service and enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Next up is Sharon McDonald.
Are you afraid? Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. I was not intending to be here, but I don't have to go to Lansing because tomorrow's Veterans Day. Is it really going to be held outside? Oh, dear. Okay, 35 degrees, okay. But good evening, everyone. I just scribbled some notes down because I wasn't thinking about this. I did come to see Councilman Herat Chanda, ascendant to the Mayor Protem Chair. So that's wonderful. And I also came for the roast, I mean, to, to say thank you for everything. I am so proud to have known Ellen for actually longer than you'd think, right? And I know how to say your last name properly. I'm also very proud of that because I know for years that didn't happen here. I think we met back in 2011 when we were both working to save our library. And we learned that it was, had a really great risk of closing and both of us got to work and worked on that. It took a very long time. And my speech isn't better because I didn't have more time. I will say things to you privately about what a wonderful job you have done. But I do remember that after we did save it and many other people in this room helped save the library, that I was so surprised that you decided to run for city council. And I remember, I'm proud to say I was here your first day and I'm here your last day. But I know when you took office, I thought, well, that's the difference between me and Ellen. I will never run for office. So here we are. What can I say? Just simply, you're a wonderful councilwoman. You're a wonderful human being. I adore you. And it is a great loss to the city of Troy that you will no longer be with us, but the city's loss is your family's gain, I'm sure. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Sharon. Next up is Edna Abraham.
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff. It's great to be here on this side of the table. And there's only one reason that I would come back and that's for Ellen. Ellen, thank you for 12 years of service. And I sit here and I marvel because on your last day, no one would fault you if you wanted to phone it in and you're not. You're still explaining, putting things in context to residents to help see the bigger picture. You're still doing that in your last minutes. And that's just a testament to who you are and what you've been to this community, not just for the 12 years that you've been on council, but in the years where you were the PTA mom and the band mom and doing all of the volunteer work without a thank you, but just because it was the right thing to do. For those that aspire to public office, she is your masterclass of integrity, of honesty, of thoughtful discernment. And man, you've got away with words that I wish I had. So thank you for your 12 years. As my council ride or die and as one of my best friends, I look forward to seeing you here on this side of the council table. Maybe we can actually see each other more often. Thank you so much.
Edna. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We do have an opportunity to respond and reply. I think we should hold our Ellen comments until a little later.
Just have one quick.
Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Hamilton.
Great to see you, Councilmember Abraham. Haven't seen you in a few years. I just thought it was funny that each speaker got progressively shorter. So thank you for that. It's great to see you.
If only the speeches would be the same. You all know that. And I just want, Dale, thanks for coming forward about the library. We'll be talking a lot about, obviously, the library, next steps, what we're going to do and how we'll look at it. Look forward to seeing your PowerPoint and appreciate your continued care and interest in trying to work for the city.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Marish, we go way back to the similar years. I appreciate you diving into the Rethinking Library Report. I just want to point out that that consultant was very clear that their recommendations in terms of architecture or expenses of buildings, that that was not their expertise. That's not what they were hired for. What they came in to help us with from a strategic planning standpoint was the library was looking to identify what they should be doing strategically going forward. That was driven, just prior to that, by the fact that the renovation we had planned to do in the youth section, the bid for that came in post-COVID way higher than anything that had been budgeted for. And it caused us all to just pause. Our CFO to say, let's pause. Our library director to pause. And as outstanding libraries all around do, to do strategic planning to better understand the services that this community expected from its library. So that Rethinking Report came back and the services that are being delivered were identified as A-plus services in like a D-plus building. When they spoke of numbers, they were doing it based on, because that is not what they're skilled to do. And that is why we went through the expense and the due diligence of hiring an architect to give us a proposal for cost. So as you bring your ideas forward, and yes, we value them, we want them, I just wanted that context of why were those numbers different? Why did they come in different? Why did they change? The realities of the building, the assessment by true experts who can do that, brought us in realistic numbers. And can we be evaluating that and looking at that plan as a community? When I say we, I don't just mean council, but as a community, of course. And please, I welcome your participation in that. I know you care. And I just, I just didn't want you to wonder why those numbers were shoved aside. That consultant themselves said you need to hire experts to help you look at your facility and its constraints.
All right, any comments on any of the reports? All right, time for council comments and I'm going to ask that we do non-Ellen council comments first. I have some that, you have some, Councilmember Gunn?
Yeah.
Or something?
Although I will say in honor of Ellen, I, normally I'm pretty short, but I've got a few pages here today.
Oh, no.
No, well, one thing for sure is, many of you may know, but today's the 50th anniversary of the Edmund Fitzgerald. And that was a pretty, pretty terrible moment in our state's history. And being on Coast Guard, we talk about that a lot. So, but a couple of things, some positive things here I want to talk about. Troy High School tennis team winning a state championship. Ryan Wang named as the 2025 U.S. Presidential Scholar from Troy, one of only two in the state. Well, I like to point out these accomplishments because I just think Troy's an amazing city and we have amazing students and residents. So the rest of my explanation is up when we get to Ellen.
Well, let me cross a couple off before we get there. Obviously, you heard tomorrow's our Veterans Day ceremony, 11 o'clock out in Veterans Plaza. Wear a coat, it'll be cold, but dry. 11 o'clock, we have a good program planned, as always. The, also on Friday, December 5th, is our annual Christmas tree lighting. And we're moving it this year. It's not going to be out in front of City Hall. It's going to be at the rink in the pavilion. New location. Hopefully, it's 40 degrees or colder so we can ice skate. Kurt, can you work on that? Thank you. But I just want to get that out there for you early planners. Also, obviously, Jean Stein passed away, former Mayor Stein, and we certainly feel that in our community pretty heavily. Her service or her, the visitation for her with her family was Friday evening and her service was Saturday morning. And it's well attended by the community on both, both accounts. And not, I've been looking at Jean all night, ironically, seeing that picture up there and it's, it's hard to believe she's gone, I guess, at this point. But we, we've all had moments with Jean and made comments about Jean already. I just wanted to make sure that she was properly recognized here in this chamber as somebody who's been such an important part of our community for a long, long time. And sat up at this table for a long, long time. So God bless Jean Stein and we, of course, are with her family as they deal with the loss of Jean as well. So with that said, we now move on to Ellen's eulogy. Jean would have appreciated that and she would have laughed, so don't feel bad. But unless there are any other comments, non-Ellen related?
Well, I was just going to say, well, there was a lot of things that happened.
Yeah, there's a lot going on.
Yeah, there is. Obviously, we had elections.
Oh, I forgot about the elections.
Obviously, we had an election. And, and you know, the ban, the bond obviously did not pass. We've touched upon that. And, you know, I was personally disappointed, but I also understand that this is part of the democratic process. And so it allows us to take some time, reflect, regroup and discuss these, this further as we have talked about, you know, obviously, we will be discussing this at the advance. And also, congratulations, obviously, to Councilmember Chamberlain and Councilmember Hamilton on their reelection. And for Annalisa, who we're excited to have join us as well. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. I actually had that circled and starred on my notes. You can see that I didn't look at them. So yes, congratulations to the two incumbents who are reelected and Annalisa, good to see you. You'll be sweating up here next week. All right. You want to start, Councilmember Gunn? We'll work down the table.
All right. Well, I want to honor you, Ellen. You're retiring after 12 years of outstanding service to the city. You've always been a steady, passionate, thoughtful voice for our community. Always doing her homework, asking the tough questions and making sure every decision reflected what was best for our residents. On a personal note, you've been a very tremendous supporter of mine, a good friend, even during the years when I ran for council and lost to someone named Dave Hamilton. Her encouragement and friendship have meant a great deal to me. She's always been someone I could count on for sound advice, good perspective and, of course, a very long, thorough explanation or two at the microphone. Let's be honest, no one can turn a two-minute comment into a masterclass on civic management quite like Ellen. Your dedication, your love for Troy and your commitment to public service has left a lasting mark on the city and on everyone who's had the privilege of serving with you. Thank you for your leadership, your mentorship, your friendship. And we'll miss your insight, your long speeches, but we know you'll continue making a difference wherever you go. Just a reminder that when you do come to city council, you only have three minutes.
Unless we waive the rules, what is on our screen?
Good and blank.
Councilmember Chamberlain.
Thank you, thank you. Hard act to follow. That was good, Mark. That was good. Ellen, it has been such an honor serving with you. I would not be where I am today if it was not for you. I remember where we had that cup of coffee at Kresge many a years ago, talked about being moms and public service. Your story, your beautiful story of fighting for this city. I would not be where I am today. I would not be sitting here if it was not for you. Hope you know that. Your dedication, your thoughtful leadership and deep commitment to our community have left a lasting, indelible mark on Troy and on all of us who've had the privilege to serve with you on council. Your steady voice, your collaborative spirit and passion for doing what's right have helped guide our city through important decisions and moving progress forward. And through it all, you have always made, at the center of your decision-making, doing what's best for the residents, everything and always. And through it all, you have always made, at the center of your decision-making, doing what's best for the residents, everything and always. You've been the conscious, conscious of council. Something I will remember about you in awe multiple times, whether it was a proclamation or even an ordinance, on the spot, Ellen, you could find compromise, and you could take two different ideas, or what you were hearing from the public, and you could meld it, and you could create something on the spot, like new language. We'd all, I mean, all of us, we looked to you, and you could just formulate it right there, then and there. And it was something that would often surprise us. We wouldn't know what's coming. And you could formulate that. And that's something that, it's like, wow, I got to eat my Wheaties, and I got to put my big-girl pants on, because, Ellen, like, that's nothing short of brilliant, the ability to create compromise and redraft on the spot for the best, for what is best for residents. Nothing short of brilliant. And so, as you begin this next chapter, I want to wish you all joy, rest, and fulfillment that you deserve. I want to thank you, and I want to thank Mike, because this is a family affair. When we do this, our families do this too. So, thank you, Mike, as well. I want to thank you for these years of service and for the example that you have set in your public leadership. You have set a higher standard for each and every one of us. You will be greatly missed, but do know, do you know that your legacy will live on forever in this city? With appreciation and warm wishes to you, Ellen.
Mayor Protem, Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Probably only time in my life I'll be speaking more than Ellen today, so written up a lot of things. But Ellen, thank you for everything you did. You know, like, any, all good things must come to an end. So likewise, your 12 years of service with the council has come to an end. Looks like there is no recount, so this is going to be the last meeting. But, you know, thank you for these 12 wonderful years. We embody the true spirit of a public servant. I wouldn't be in the council without your advice, and I think I, I'm inspired by how you operate. There's a long list of accomplishments that you have, and if we talk about that, we'll be here all night, so I'm not going to do that. But let me touch on a couple of the things that I believe is your true legacy. When I was exploring my run for council about two and a half years ago, I met with you over a glass of wine. The meeting was one of the best meetings I had. Yes, the wine was good, but the conversation was even much better. We talked about everything about Troy, our kids, schools, public safety, library, and almost nothing about state or national politics, partisan politics. And it's no secret that all of us come from partisan backgrounds. We'll be running for public office in straighter other level. Some of us already ran for office. But here, as a group, we managed to set our partisan side to the side and do what we believe is to the best interest of the city. And no one champions that better than you. You are like a force of gravity that pulls us towards the center of our universe, and our universe is the city of Troy. And I believe this will be one of your lasting legacies for years to come. One of my fondest memories with you was when we hung out at the band meeting, band parents during the Troy Colts Band Marathon last year. We are both band parent alumni. We were there not as council members or mayor protem, we were there simply as band parent alumni to reconnect with our extended family of Troy High. And I watched your first lecture or first remarks. You talked about your family, Mike, Greg, and your daughter. I know, over 12 years, your family has grown bigger. I think you have grandparents and son-in-law. But you, through your work, your family now includes the city of Troy. I think your extended family includes all of us. So, when your term is over, please come back, reconnect with us, just like we reconnected with the city of the Troy High family. And as Councilmember Gunn said, you still get three minutes over there, but rest assured, we'll have a ride back home because we live in the same area, Crooks and Wattles area. So, and then we can talk on, on our way as long as we can, maybe on your driveway. So, it truly was an honor to work with you and inspired by you. And like everyone else in this room, I will truly, truly miss you. We'll hopefully see you more on the other side of the room, but we will really miss you on this side of the podium.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. I'm going to try not to, like, get teary or anything. So, Ellen, I, I actually had prepared remarks, but I tried to print them, but I was almost late trying to print them. So, I'm going to just speak from my heart today. So, before I ran for council, you know, you hear about giants, you know, Ellen and Edna, and you hear all these amazing things about Ellen and Edna, Ellen and Edna. And so, I was actually really nervous to meet you guys because I didn't know what to expect. But when I met you over coffee, I was like, oh, my gosh. Like, I was so excited. Honestly, like, everyone was saying you were the reason why they were excited to, to, you know, join council, and you were the reason why. I was like, oh, my God, we're going to be best friends. We had our little hearts after our texts and everything. But, but I was just, like, envisioning, you know, our, our bond and our friendship outside of even just council. And it's true. We have developed a strong friendship. And I know when things come up, and I'm trying to weigh my decisions, I always call you. And you help me through kind of the, the thought process, and we just spend a long time on the phone. And, and I just appreciate you as a person. You are just such a positive person, so encouraging, and fiercely independent. I think you give such a good perspective on things. And obviously, everyone can see that, you know, the public has seen that. But, you know, obviously, in those conversations, I, I've really come to really, truly appreciate that about you. You're fiercely, you know, independent and, you know, always telling everybody to try to stay out of partisan politics at the table. And I think we listen to you, and we, and we really try to, try to follow, follow those things because I, I do think that's best for, for our city and, and, you know, and for us to kind of stay in our own lane, and so to speak, and focus on what is best for the city. And obviously, your legacy is really going to live on. We're going to miss you. I don't really know what we're going to do. I feel like I don't know how to step into, to this. I, I can't. I can't. You can't be replaced. And so, I'm just truly, truly going to miss you. But you so deserve retirement. You've given so much for so many years, long before council. And, you know, you deserve time with your family, Mike, your grandkids, your children. And so, I'll still be calling you, and we'll still have our conversations because I need, I still need you. So.
Thanks, Teresa. David?
I had to write it down because it would have been too hard. Last weekend, we mourned the loss and celebrated the life of former Mayor Jean Stein, one of, if not the greatest public servant in the history of Troy. And when I was growing up in Troy, whenever someone mentioned City Council, mentioned the city of Troy, Jean Stein would be a name I'd always remember. And for the last eight years, I've served on council for the last 12 years, whenever someone's mentioned Troy City Council, city of Troy. No offense, Mayor Baker, but, but encompasses City Council to me as Ellen Hoderick. Your name is synonymous with it, what it's supposed to be. When I think of the last eight years I've served on council, when I see Ellen Hoderick, I think of a person as honored and continued the legacy that Jean Stein built. She's continued the balance, balanced, nonpartisan, compassionate public service that Jean embraced her entire life. Ellen's challenged me to listen to people who think differently, see their perspective, see the good in them. And anyone who comes here and speaks of all political leanings knows that she will listen to you, she will talk to you. It's incredible. It's something we don't see in politics these days at all levels, even in local politics. Look at how other city councils run. It's, it's a completely different story, and that's because of you. In my first years of council, when conflict and challenges we faced took its toll, Ellen was always there for me. I remember taking long lunch breaks at Ford in an empty conference room, and Ellen always taking my call, just listening, truly listening to my struggles, encouraging me to continue to fight for what I think is right. We've had strong disagreements, passionate disagreements, but Ellen taught me how to work together to compromise and find solutions, solutions that we usually all agree on. When you trust someone, when you know someone's core values and goals are in the right place, disagreement is healthy. Many residents have talked to me about how our current council almost always votes unanimously. We occasionally have dissenting votes, but as a whole, almost all our decisions are unanimous. And it's a good thing. We work together, we compromise, we come up with solutions that are built to last and not swing from election to election and council to council. And Ellen's leadership is how that came to be. My first two years on council were not, not like that, and the last six have been, and I'm grateful. It makes our city run better, makes life easier for our residents and for our staff. I can't even fathom serving on this council without you here. As I've said before, you are a voice of reason and humanity. Your 12 years have seen Troy recover from the depths of great reception and corruption to the thriving power, economic powerhouse it is today. It's been an honor to serve with you. I wish you well in your retirement and more time with Mike and your family and kids, and look forward to continuing to work together to keep making Troy a better place.
Anyone else? No, I'm kidding. No, I.
You don't have to.
No, well, I won't. I can't. I, I'll be really hon, I, you know, I love Ellen, and we're very close on this council, and everybody knows it. We, we try not to talk about it, but we're close, and we've been close for a long time, and it's, I think, served the city well, if I, because of you. And I am probably a little bit in denial about some of this. I mean, I, I want to start with, we'll be fine without Ellen at this table, and Ellen will be the first to tell us that because that's who Ellen is. And of course, we are. But she's also a huge, huge part of the, the success of the, the tone that's been at this table for the past several years. And her fingerprints are all over so many, so many different things in the city. And I, I've served with you, Ellen, for 10 years. And I, Ellen wasn't so sure what to think of me when I first got elected onto this council. And she might still not be too sure what to think of me. But it, it was interesting because it took some time to figure out that, as different as we were in certain political aspects, and we were very similar in a lot of ways on a human level. And we quickly bonded over some things. Not quickly, actually. It took a little bit, but at a certain point, we started bonding over some things in my, my life that, that meant something to you, and, you know, it kind of went from there. And I talk a lot about relationship building. And I think, when I think about that and when I speak it, the relationship that we've built is one of those that I'm talking about because I think that I, I couldn't do what I do without the relationship I built with you, Ellen. And I'm extremely grateful for all that you've done for me personally, to help me sort through things, to support me, to disagree with me, to just to help keep the relationships at this table and this, in this city strong. And I can't, I was trying to think about it, how do I sum up Ellen? I, and you can't for a number of reasons. And.
Because I'm weird.
No, well, yeah, she's weird. No, but it's because you have a knack of, you, you have a way of giving each one of us what we need in the moment. And I think that's something that's really, that's part of your legacy, and it's part of who you are as, as a human being. But, you know, there's times when you make the more conservative us more moderate, and the more liberal of us more moderate, and you make us think of things differently. And it's so healthy and appropriate for the roles that we're doing. And every one of us has talked about the independent aspect or the nonpartisan aspect of who you are. And that is something that, that is your legacy in so many ways. And in the, in the community, there are people who think you're too liberal, and there are people who think you're too conservative, and they're all in this room right now. It's, it's a fascinating piece of who you are, and that puts, that means you're put in the exact right spot. And it doesn't surprise me that you've served for 12 years with respect in this community. And it does go across a broad swath of people, whether it's the PTA family, the band families, you know, the, the corporate world that you worked in, the city hall staff that you worked with, the advocates for the library and other aspects of this community that you worked with, your council colleagues, even the ones that aren't at this table anymore that you may have disagreed with at times, I'm sure could say really nice things about you tonight because they, they know how effective you've been and what a good person you've been and for our community. I, it's funny, I don't know what you're going to say next, and so I keep thinking of all of these things, but I don't want to steal any of your thunder. But obviously, Mike's here tonight, and if he wasn't here tonight, he'd be watching at home because people don't realize Mike watches every meeting at home because he cares about the city too. And obviously, he loves Ellen. But you have a really good partner at home that has lifted you through times when it's been difficult. And we're thankful for you, Mike. And I know that four and even eight years ago, you probably wished she wouldn't have run each of those times for a number of reasons. But you did it because you love Ellen and you also love the city. So, thank you for that. But Bethany's here too, Ellen, and we, you have meant so much to our family on a personal level, too. You're, you're part, you're part of us in many ways. And she wouldn't have missed being here for the world, too. It means that much to us. And I, I just want the community to know that now that Ellen's leaving, I'll be the one that's talking even longer, so that's good. But more than that, honestly, you, you are respected in this community for all the right reasons. And it's impossible to put into words how I feel about you as a council member and as a friend. And it's a struggle for all of us, as you saw. So, I don't envy you having to speak to all of us. But you are, you are loved in this community, you're loved at this table, and we are very sad to see you go on to the next chapter in your life, but we couldn't be happier for you, Ellen. And we know that you're going to enjoy what's, what's next for you. And also, I expect to see you out and around anyway. I, you care too much about this community to completely disappear. But thank you. Just thank you.
You're welcome. Mike joked that I should, when it became my turn, just say that I had nothing to say. I do, I do have thoughts to say, and I tried to organize them. For context, I'm retiring from the work world. This is my final job, my big $2,000-some-dollar-a-year salary here with this job. It's bookended with, my first job at 14 was a bookmender at the public library in the community I grew up in. And here I am all these years later, public servant hood. Obviously, the library, a big emphasis of my life, but public safety also. Behind the scenes, becoming a student of that and an advocate for, for the work, the public safety work that goes on. And I include the DPW efforts, the unsung hero part of our public safety team, kind of behind the scenes. It's all, all of it, to me, is important. 12 years ago, Barack Obama was president, Rick Snyder was Michigan's governor, Brooks Patterson was Oakland County Executive. I've seen a lot of change. I've had to work with a lot of different people. I had the privilege of working with a lot of different people, and I think that's where that nonpartisan thing comes from. When I was elected, the city had just recalled a mayor earlier that year. We had been in turmoil here in Troy with a divided council and a divided community. Yes, I know our recent bond discussions have been difficult, but it was really divided then. Social media had entered the picture with Facebook specifically driving a lot of misinformation and division. The challenge at hand was to heal and to come together because a city staff cannot function in that kind of environment. And I've worked hard to do that all along. I, too, had role models that demonstrated the capability to compromise, and I tried to bring that to the table. Leaders pictured on the wall and others. Leaders pictured on the wall, and others that were at the table, and others in the community that sought to do that. The truth is, I've just never sat here or attended ribbon cuttings or met with residents for coffee as just me. But as a person representing so many other wonderful contributors to the community, I've always had all of them in my mind, kind of almost on my shoulder. Some of them spoke here tonight. Former Councilwoman Abraham, I always called her my North Star, my Council North Star. But also employees of the city, who I had the privilege to work with when I reported to Cindy Stewart in the Community Affairs Department. We were fellow employees. I still consider myself a fellow employee in this role, just as I consider myself a fellow resident, just with the title that demands a certain role. A really special group of people. It was a multi-partisan group. I called us Republicans, Democrats, Independents and Codependents, and people I don't have, to this day, any knowledge what their political affiliation was, came together in the community back when I was an activist. That experience informs me to this day, keeping me nonpartisan, because I found that fun and rewarding. And also importantly, it's what our city charter demands of us at the council table. Some of those folks have passed away. While others are still at work trying to do their best for the greater good, I've truly done my best to represent all of you, and you all know who you are. If I have not been your cup of tea, you can blame Tom Krant, because he collected the signatures the first time I ran. It's all about being part of something bigger than just yourself. And truly, that's the gift of this experience or any group that you're involved in, any work that you're doing, recognizing that constantly. And I watched my children learn that in the Troy High bands. While there have been some lows and challenges along the way and stress, sleepless nights, there is just so much good in local government, in local government work. From this vantage point, I've had the privilege to be moved by the work I've seen so many organizations do. Troy Youth Assistance came here tonight. The Troy Chamber of Commerce. Three presidents I've seen there. I think of Tara's holiday luncheon selfie and how it could just envelopes the whole community. The Troy Community Foundation, the Troy Nature Center, the Troy Historic Commission, the Troy Interfaith Group, and the work it has done, just pulling people together, constantly pulling people together to not be divided. There's many others. I thank you all. To fellow citizens on our boards and committees, thank you all for what you do to serve. Planning Commissioners, I hold a special place in my heart for you all. The master plan and the nodes work. It was a privilege to take on those challenges with the planning commission. Staff, city staff, please know I've done my best, and my respect for all of you really knows no bounds. I appreciate you as a resident. It's like breathing. People have no idea how much it matters what comes out of City Hall. Something was broken here, then people would know. The staff really comes together consistently. The work done in all of our community collectively is important. Collectively is the key word. In addition to nonpartisanship, the charter also calls for each council member to perform their duties within this council manager form of government. And I reflected on that a little bit earlier, about what a challenge that is. It's hard, it's messy. Yes, we often come to the table and end out voting unanimously. There was not unanimity sometimes before that time comes. Without violating the Open Meeting Act, we do talk, we do touchstone with one another, we do sense check, and we truly work to come here and work as professionally as possible to further the decision-making. As a team, it's a team sport. It's a lot harder to do than people think. It's sometimes exhausting, it's irritating. Sometimes we let one another down, or we vote differently, and we're all secretly and maybe a little privately miffed at one another. But we keep moving on. The secret for my nonpartisanship is I force myself out of the echo chamber that we can all get into, because we're human. Yes, I watch CNN. Yes, I watch Fox News. Yes, I watch MSNBC. Yes, I read all the partisan stuff. I even do the good old-fashioned 6:30 nightly news, just to understand what people are seeing. Yes, a lot of people are getting their information on socials. There's generational differences. I'm always trying to understand what are my fellow residents thinking, experiencing? What might they be thinking? And that helps with the compromise, just putting myself in other people's shoes. I have my ideological and partisan leanings. They need to be checked at the door, so that we can work in a nonpartisan fashion. And I really appreciate my colleagues, who've always been willing and working with me, to do that. I'm beyond grateful. I've had the privilege to work with the members of the current group assigned to this important project that we do here. Anne Gault, it was good to see you. Adna, you as well. And there are others in the past that you might be surprised how much respect I have for the work I did with them. But I'm going to focus at the team right here. First, City Manager Nastasi. Thank you for stepping into this role about a year ago now and picking up the pieces of a lot of work that needed to be done. We had some lost years over multiple reasons. And you worked quickly. Your work ethic is incredible. You and the team have brought what can be described as a private sector pace to the discussions. Within the context of the rules and boundaries of public sector service delivery, your integrity, your stewardship, your ability to put things into perspective. Coming out of a long career in police work culminating as Chief of Police is commendable, admirable, and the stuff of sincere public servant hood. I'm grateful to have had an opportunity to serve with you, even if it was only for a year. City Attorney Bloom. It makes her so uncomfortable when we talk about her, because her job is to protect the city from exposure. So I'm being sensitive here. Your history here, your understanding of decisions and the issues at hand, your steadiness. You yourself are a longtime caring resident of the city of Troy, involved in the community in a number of ways. You're always present at various city events, all while serving in important professional roles and being recognized by organizations such as the International Municipal Lawyers Association. You are so well-regarded by the professions and the professionals within your realm. I would like to say more. But I know you're more comfortable if we do not ever even have to call on you during a meeting. So I'll move on. Just now, I have appreciated working with you. I'm not an attorney. I do not pretend to play one on TV. And I've just appreciated your counsel along the way. Council colleagues, Mayor Protem Chanda. Your enthusiasm for this work and for the city is contagious and genuine. He shows up dancing sometimes. You bring it with such a constructive view and happiness. It radiates off you. Combined with your analytical capabilities, you're just a smiling piece of council member decision-making humanity joining the table. Watching you study, take in data, and roll it around in that friendly, smart head of yours to work to be a solid, measured decision-making is just fun. And I very much appreciate it as a fellow resident. We are lucky to have you at this table. I love it when you crack a joke and you recognize it might take me a minute to catch up with your accent. You'll give a pause and watch while my brain processes and then enjoys the laugh that follows. Councilman Gunn. We met years ago, running against one another for council, and found ourselves knowing that we both want what is best for the community and had way more in common than we might have otherwise thought. We're both of a similar, shall we say, seasoned age here at the table. And I think we have sort of a shared sense of older Troy as it evolved into the newer Troy, and how that plays into the work here and how we represent our fellow residents. You do it with a tremendous sense of humor. That quick wit, sometimes exactly when we've needed it along the way, and we find ourselves all laughing at a moment that then allows us to clear our head and make a decision, has been valuable. And you do it with that hip little cap when you show up to events, too. I look forward to seeing you and more in the pictures and recognizing that going forward. Watching you both join council after running against one another has been a kick. They really like one another. I've enjoyed your senses of humor, a lot of self-deprecating, when I think about it. And keep on keeping yourselves humble that way, because humble servant hood serves us all so well. Councilmember Chamberlain. It has been such a privilege to watch you work on behalf of the residents and to watch you grow more and more into this role. You have found your voice, your center for how to do this role. We all benefit from that. I see you think things through carefully, discerning ways forward by taking in the facts at hand. So you're just so smart. And bringing then the institutional knowledge that I've seen you. It's like, I can tell, you have this file cabinet of everything you've been experiencing that you're drawing out of as you do your thinking. You bring heart, soul, and a ton of empathy to the role. Troy is better for it, and I'm glad they returned you to the table. Councilmember Brooks. She puts up with my sense of humor. She's the good doctor at our table. Your diagnostic skills are amazing. Taking in the facts and data of the city's opportunities and challenges and sorting through them with steady wisdom and discernment. You have been a touchstone for me when my mind is reeling. And I couldn't appreciate you more for that. You are smart, measured, and caring. I admire and enjoy you so much. Troy has a very trustworthy representative in you with the special perspective you bring. We've often talked about maybe one time going out dancing together. With me on the other side of the table, could we maybe do that sometime? You're sunny, funny, and serious, all in one council person sitting here. And I love that about you. Councilmember Hamilton. I am always blown away by the way your brain works. I've had a front row seat to it, heated phone calls to it, heartfelt discussions. That brain works with rapid-firing facts, data inputs, et cetera. And he's... Sometimes when he talks, his hands are doing this, and I know that this is happening inside there. Just a rulling derish of ideas and next steps. It is fascinating to watch that. And I look forward to watching you become more and more adept at blending that capability, that is so uniquely you, with the thinking of your colleagues here, who might be a little slower on the uptake than your little rapid-fire brain, but equally as smart with you. And as well as with the operational side of the table, of the governing equation. I have confidence in you to do so. Your heart for this is huge. It's like, you know, it extends like its way out. He really cares about this community. Mayor Baker. When you were first elected 10 years ago, going to be candid, I wondered at this Manchurian candidate from California. I'm looking at him, his pictures of his family. It's like when you buy a frame at Hallmark and the picture that's on it, that's the Baker's. Like, you can't be for real. And they were for real. And I know you were wondering what kind of shrill, liberal, crazy lady you were going to have to endure. Fair enough. 10 years later, I look at you as a council brother. You're like my brother. We've shared a passion for truly caring about the community and the metro Detroit region with our whole hearts and minds. Along the way, your passion evolved into a gigantic passion. I don't think you even know how passionate you are about what you do and what you bring to the community. I don't know that you fully recognize all that you bring. We've been talking about Mayor Jean Stein. She said to me on numerous equations, Ethan is the best mayor this city has ever had. She knew what the role required, and she knew what it takes to do all you do on behalf of the city, to protect the city's reputation, to lift its reputation. To everyone in Troy, the time this mayor gives to represent us boggles my mind. Every citizen in business here, regardless of political affiliation, is served by you. It has been a privilege and an honor to watch that, especially in these divisive times. Relationships matter. You learned that from someone famous. Who was it you worked for? We don't want to talk about that again. But that was one of the qualities people across both sides of the aisle respected in that president, valued in that president, and that we can all emulate in every president that has functioned in that way, and certainly in a mayor in our city. Bethany, I'm glad to see you back there, because the support of your family has been incredible. Bethany, Arden, Canaan, Avon. I thank you all on behalf of the community for the time you give and for giving us a mayor that works so hard to serve us well. One of the qualities that is especially amazing, and this isn't the most mundane of things, but those of us who've had to sit there and gavel in can appreciate this. He runs the meeting like it's nothing. It is something to run a meeting, even heated meetings. That is a key role for our mayor in our charter, running the meetings, being the front man for the band. And you do it with excellence and with such commitment, and also a really wicked sense of humor. And I will always appreciate that about you. Councilmember-elect Annalisa Bloom. The best part of this transition for me is knowing that when I pass the baton to you, you will not let it drop to the track. I know you won't. You are tremendously qualified for this role. Officially, I continue to serve in this seat until you are sworn in. Officially, I continue to serve in this seat until you are sworn in next Monday night. It will be my great joy and pleasure to be here next Monday, to watch you take this seat and assume these duties, and our new city council team will be formed. I know how it feels to have someone who's served for a long time leave the table, and you go home thinking, oh, but they just left with so much institutional knowledge. You've got this, guys. You've got it, all of you. And you're going to be a great asset to the team. I believe in you. We have East Sider connections, so we have it going on. I am still here for you as a fellow resident, should you want to reach out to me. Though as soon as I step away from the table, I also know it will be time to let you fully take the reins. When I first was elected, a councilman named Randy Husk gave me a call, gave me some sage advice about making sure to make my decisions, don't sit on a fence. He was very colorful with his advice. And I said to him, in my panic of, what have I done? And now I'm taking on this role, can I call you? Will you help me as I go through the agendas? And he said, you can call me, but I won't have the knowledge that you're going to have when you sit at the table. And that's the truth. When you're on this side at the table, you suddenly have other additional perspectives, things you have to think of as a fiduciary. And he was very wise in making sure, he encouraged me to do what I'm going to encourage you to do. Keep turning to one another, bring your respective worldviews, but sort them with your colleagues. See them as colleagues. Yes, we have friends, family, activists in town who have views of what we should do. It must be balanced with our fiduciary responsibilities, which is really hard. There's people I would probably felt let down by my decisions, and they have no idea that have really made the best decision, because sometimes you can't share, for reasons, the full scope of your decision-making. That does happen, and it's the hard part and the thankless part of this job, but it's understandable, and you move on. Next Monday, I'll be almost as happy as my husband, Mike, to make this transition. And this seems a good time to thank him for the care and love he has given to Troy by supporting me with the care and love he gives to me. Quietly brilliant and caring, he gave as much as I did along the way. We all love you for that, Budley. To my son Greg, daughter Lynn, son-in-law David, and grandsons William and Jonathan, thank you all also for your support and encouragement, and for being the constant reminder, what do I want my kids to see me do? How do I want them to see me behave? How do all our children in this community want to see us conduct ourselves? To my fellow residents, we just came off a campaign season and a lot of heated debate about a bond proposal. I started in all my work for the city driven by misinformation that had taken over social media at that time. It's wild to feel a little bit like we've gone full circle now and have a new era of social media challenges thrust upon us by the recent discussions. As residents, we have a role to play to keep Troy strong, too. As I step away and rejoin the important part of the city org chart, the box called "residence", I commit to try to do what I can to help in that regard, to help us behave as fellow residents with excellence, because we're part of the governing process, too. I recently happened upon my father's eighth grade yearbook. Also discovered he ran for city council in the town I grew up in, in the year I was born. He obviously didn't win, because I had no idea he had ever run. I found myself looking at this book from 1940, and inside, there was a gentleman, Emmett Duhane, who was bidding farewell to a 40-year career as an educator. He wrote the most lovely note in here. Near the end of it, he says, "From my experience in looking backward over some measure of years, I wish to pass on to you this thought. True leadership must be built on real character plus trained intelligence. For those of the world who are destined to be followers, let them choose such leaders and to them be loyal." I pledge I will be loyal to those I've chosen here at this table, and who I respect so Again, this was 1940, it was, these young people graduated, the young men went off to war not very long later after high school. He went on to say, "The world holds much of good in spite of the present gloom of war and other confusions." We have other confusions now, don't we? "You are likely to do best with the opportunities which come your way if you will always keep a song in your heart." Please keep a song in your hearts as you do the good work of the city of Troy.
Just like you said, Mike, short and sweet. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you for the privilege.
No, thank you. That concludes the council comments. We have nobody signed up for public comment for items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy, and we have no closed session, so with that, we are adjourned.